Okay, so welcome everyone to the Economic and Cultural Development Committee meeting for October. We have all councillors in attendance, councillor Madison, councillor Deputy Mayor Johnny, councillor Doyle, councillor Antonelli, Mayor Harding and councillor Madden. You know, I'll move on to the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud peoples. Do we have any declare, any, anything to declare in the, no? And no business outstanding. So we'll move on to the confirmation of the minutes, which was held on the 3rd of September 2024. Do I have a mover for that? Thanks councillor Doyle and a seconda. Thank you Deputy Mayor Johnny. Any discussions? No, put that to the vote, all in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous and carried. Move on to the first item of the officers' reports, which the first one is the Ipswich Arts Advisory Group. Summary report and updated terms of reference. Could I please have the relevant officer come to the stage? Thank you.
Did you say to the stage or the stand?
Oh, sorry.
I was just thinking arts, I'm thinking, you know, let's go. Lights, camera, action, name and title.
Good afternoon, Courtney Stroh, Coordinator Creative Industries Development.
Thank you, thank you so much. I must say firstly, this is a very in-depth report. There's lots of reports that have been pulled together to make up this, this item. I've got a couple of questions. Firstly, we talk about, so it's, they're setting two terms, two-year, two terms to a maximum of four. And then it's 50% of membership will be dropped off in the first?
Afterwards, yes.
After the fall?
After the first four years or after the next term. So it was determined that because we were growing, the Ipswich Arts Advisory from seven members to 12, that would keep that full amount because we're already introducing almost 50%. But then the next time round, we would look at only keeping 50% after the next term, just to help keep things consistent because there are so many topics of conversation and that, and to allow that to continue.
Yeah, I, I really do agree with that, coming from the sports side of things. I, I do agree with that. The, the bit that I would like to see if we could look to fine tune is we've got a chairperson and a secretary. I know in sporting organisations, when you have the secretary and your, your president drop off on the first year together, it can cause a lot of issues within your organisation. So if it's the same people and we get to the four years, the risk of losing a lot of intellectual property, knowledge in head could be a factor.
So the one thing I would say is at the moment is that everyone right now is like, I'm ready to tattoo myself. I, I am here, I'm committed and that just doesn't seem to be the concern that we have. If anything, it's around how are we going to let fresh people come in. But I think that's something that we could definitely add to the terms of reference around, can we please keep the chair or the secretary to be consistent for the second term?
Yeah, and right, yeah, in, in maybe, I don't know, yeah. Anyway, that's one of the things I do see.
Yep, understand.
Yeah, you know, from a sports point of view.
I think the other part is, is that because it's a group that is supported by council, there's a consistency of having the officer there as well as present. So it's not that everything just disappears and they're scrambling to figure it out again. It's actually something that's going to be supported by Ipswich City Council and the officer, whoever is in this role, will be continuing to support them.
All right, thank you. I, just reading through it, I was just trying to work out that, that it had there that we, it was, did we have a creator of Ipswich Summit this year or do, is, was there something that said we weren't going to?
So we didn't have one this year because it started to clash when we had the election and caretaker period and that. And the other part, there was a bit of exhaustion of engagement. So our arts community have had a lot going on, which is super exciting between Fire Station and the Ipswich Art Workshop, that by having the summit, it might have been a bit too much. So we're currently going through the idea of having it start of next year, but we'll be briefing everyone as that comes through.
Awesome. My, my other just line of like thinking when I've read it all through, I'm just trying to grapple with, what does culturally vibrant destination mean and what does that look like?
Yeah, so I guess it's just that the arts are accessible in your day-to-day life and we're, we're aware of it as a community. So when you're going down the streets, you might see public art, you hear buskers on the street, there's, you know, the way that our new buildings are designed, that there's consideration for how that happens, that overall we are a creative and cultural city. It's also really important that arts is a storyteller of people's positions and things that they've gone through in life. So a way of having those stories reflect in our general Ipswich society.
Great. And there was a little bit about new cultures, just if you can just give us a little?
Yeah, so we, I think we have to really acknowledge the fact that we've got such a multicultural landscape and it's important that as people come here, that they're feeling it's their home and that they also have their stories being told and heard. And we're seeing a huge increase in that with actually, with the number of multicultural groups that apply for regional arts development funds and they want to be participating in helping their professional development in that space.
Yeah, great. And, and have we, what's some of the things we've done for the new, have we done?
Yeah, so like we've got things around like, for example, Vietnamese storyteller at the moment who is going to be doing poetry stories about being refugees from Vietnam and their stories and they received Professional Development Fund through Radif to be able to support them.
Yes.
So those things in regards to cultural diversity, we're definitely supporting them through that space. We're also hosting a lot of our Articulate workshops in those areas now. So we put like Articulate on the road. So we've been having the workshops, not just here in Ipswich Central, but in Springfield to be able to support that multiculturalism and that's really paying off as well.
Okay, great. So I've got just a couple more.
It's okay.
I know you're very, you're very good in this space and I want to get everything out I can. So we've got the Arts and Culture Strategy 2018-2023. What's happening for next?
Yeah, so that is definitely on the agenda to be working through for the Arts and Culture Strategy. There's a number of items that we've been working on and we're currently doing internal conversation around how best to structure that moving forward. Is it a strategy? Is it a vision? And we're kind of be working during the creators summit, actually, working with the community as well to go, what is the best way of having something really tangible that is a document that actually helps deliver change and it doesn't just sit on a shelf? So that's the aim of it.
Yeah, thank you. And now this is just in my head, now you tell me, yes, no, we can do this. I feel like I'm having a private conversation with you. Forgot that you're all here, sorry. I'll get to it. When I was going through the reports, I just, I was like, okay, we've got a summary from the last two years and we've got our reference for the next two years. Do we have like a, and then we've got to get this, the Arts and Culture Strategy lined up for the next two. Just having, you know, all of the, having the reports from last and then having the strategy going forward altogether. So you marry them up because a lot of the stuff that I was reading was referencing 2016 and that's like eight years ago, the facts and figures. So are we, we're gonna?
Yeah, so we are currently doing the research of doing a set of, where we're currently at, set of my report to be able to say where we're currently at and summarising that. And then we'll be coming forward and doing briefings and engaging everyone about the next steps in relation to it further, about that. But absolutely acknowledge, this is the establishment of Ipswich Arts Advisory Group has been something that the community was crying out for for a long time and it has taken its time to get there and now it's been running successfully for over two and a half years.
Yes, great, thank you. Sorry, has anyone else got any questions? Thank you. Greenie? Ah, Mayor Harding first, thank you.
Thank you, Mr, Mr O'Farrell, for this report. Can I ask you, with this, I guess blossoming, was that any reason why we, we received increased funding for Radif or what other levers, I guess, what were some of the other things that we've seen because of the increased, I guess, consultation and vibrancy in this area?
So what's really occurred with having the Ipswich Arts Advisory Group and then them working closely with our offices? So we're actually on a rotating basis where we have different departments and different officers that come and meet with the group to talk about future plans, whether it be Spark Festival or something at the Civic Centre. And through that consultation, we really get to hear and understand what the community wants, which means we're shaping our programmes, using the right language, getting them on board to understand the priorities. And they are all advocates for Ipswich in the arts. So if you were to speak to any of the existing members, they're out there also advocating for it, which meant that we've had a very large uptick in the amount of people that apply for things like Radif, which then led to our increase in funding. So, yeah, so going from 55,000 to $105,000 of funding.
Okay, and through the chair, I hear a lot from the creative community about the Articulate workshops. What, what's the feedback that you're getting? Like, what are the highlights and what are the things that you might be looking to tweak and change?
Yeah, definitely. So the Articulate programme has been a huge success. In its first 12 months of operation, there were 524 people that attended these workshops that really helped the other side of creative industries. It's not teaching them how to paint or draw or sing. It's actually teaching them around how to promote themselves, how to have strong CVs, how to put forward great applications. And that has just been an incredible lightbulb moment for our community in being able to really establish themselves as something more professional and be seen in additional areas and additional, additional lights. That we have a really great ongoing engagement. So through the Shape Your Ipswich page, we're always encouraging people to be putting up their ideas for other workshops and that. And we complete surveys at the end of it to understand where people are at and anything else that they want from the workshop. So it's quite dynamic. Really interesting though, at the moment, the one thing we have is that musicians, we struggle a little bit to get them to come along. So they're, you know, they're at night, this isn't a priority. It's definitely not cool to sit in a room and talk about your CV. But this is some of the stuff we've got to go, how do we break down those barriers and start encouraging, yeah, some of the musicians to be supporting in that area?
Thank you, thank you Chair, thank you, Mr O.
Councillor Antonelli?
Yes, through the chair, thank you. And look, thank you very much, Ms Stroh, for this report. You're very passionate about what you do.
I am.
Can I, just with respect to the roles and the terms of reference and, and I touch on the fact that councillor Augustine mentioned the secretary's role. Anyone who's ever performed the secretary's role for a community group knows that, you know, the president's role is, or chairperson's role is the easiest of all of them. The secretary's role is the hardest. Now, I just, I guess, just being concerned about the success, ongoing success of this group. If the secretary's role is quite burdensome and it is a council's role, they're all volunteers, there's no honorary paid to any of them. If we should not provide a council-appointed secretarial service for them, whether that be yourself or somebody else within the department to assist in that regard, so they take on that heavy load of the secretarial services and that maybe a different role be given in there as perhaps a deputy chair for that committee. So that, again, you've got the opportunity for somebody else to represent the chair, should the chair not be available. They are volunteers, so I'm just looking to lighten the burden. Has that ever been examined?
Yeah.
Either of those options?
So we definitely went through the roles with the Ipswich Arts Advisory Group before, as part of the terms of reference. And the current secretary, at the moment, it's actually not a lot of work. We do a lot of the organise the meetings, the venues and do the correspondence. They take up the minutes and when the secretary isn't available for the meeting, if that occurs, then the minutes are shared and taken by other members of the group. There's actually something really important about them feeling they have ownership of this group and it's not a council requirement. But it is something that has been considered around it and they were quite comfortable for that to remain. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, thank you, Ms Stroh. Thank you. So do I have a mover for that report? Thanks councillor Doyle. Second, Mayor Harding, discussion? Thanks Mayor Harding.
I'd just like to thank all the members of the Ipswich Arts Advisory Group. So Melanie Saward, Natalie Blacklock, Kate Roberts, Carly Hill, Matt Chambers, Tom Horn and Wayne McDonald. And the amount of dedication that they've put into and how they've worked with us very practically. I think they've been, and, and I guess, push, extend us and I think it's been really, really great. And thank you to the team in council who've, who've managed that and worked very closely with them. I would, I'm supportive of the terms of reference to stay as they are. They are volunteers. I think it would be very hard to start putting in, the secretary has to stay and you can't have, I think that'd be very difficult to manage. I think having council there is that, that admin support would be enough for that consistency. But I guess I'd, I'd be very supportive to keep the terms of reference as they are and just thank the group for the contributions that they are providing to our community.
Thank you. Councillor Doyle?
Thank you Chair. I also just want to take the opportunity to thank Courtney and the team for the work that they're doing in this space. And as you mentioned, it's not just Ipswich Central, it's right across Ipswich into the eastern suburbs. And we have such a rich diversity within our population. So it is really important that council continues this work in supporting all residents right across Ipswich. And I particularly liked seeing the part around creative economy. It's a driver of innovation, but it's also the catalyst for economic transformation. We know that in developing our Ipswich Central revitalisation strategies and, and plans. And it's certainly been called out by external advisers to counsel when we were building our new planning scheme that leaning into our rich cultural community here is really important for economic longevity and transformation. So thank you to Courtney for doing it so diligently and passionately.
Thank you. Mayor Harding?
If I may have a comment, the Arts and Culture Strategy 2018-2023, as background, the, the previous council looked at that and it's a really great strategy and obviously you would have been part of that. We felt that it was quite a good strategy, that there were the, the five, I guess, pillars of that action plan. It was just a matter of how do we implement it and how do we, you know, continue to consult with that community? The community were very, the creative community was very wedded to the strategy, really spent a lot of time with the previous council on it. So it's great to, I think now it's, it's great to see the, the next step and, and that. So I just want to give credit to that, that particular strategy.
Oh, thank you. I also would like to just say thank you to everyone that pulled this together. There's a lot of, there's a lot of information in it and I want to particularly say thank you to Dr Jones and Dr Power. They contributed to a lot of the information as well. For me, setting up this advisory, you know, through, for the arts, I should say, really gives the creative community direction, stability and drive to go forward. One of the things that I found going through my travels in the arts space is that there's been, and there's been this reference to sport, sport, sport. And it's even in one of the, the docu, one of the sentences in one of the documents. And for me, I look at this and I see how the strategy and how everyone's come together. And I think this is a really a good start to build on the way sport is, is functions. I know a lot of sporting bodies come from world sporting bodies all the way down, but we needed to bring the arts community together. And this is, for me, it looks like this is how we keep the arts community together and going forward and being able to get really good outcomes instead of everyone just fly, you know, just floating out everywhere. So I really commend everyone who's worked on this strategy for years and going forward, I think it's going to be, yeah, great for them. Yes, awesome. Thank you. So I'll put that to the vote, all in favour? That's carried and unanimous. We'll move on to item three, which is the Quarterly Event Sponsorship and Ticket Allocation Report from July 1 to September 30. I've got one, I've got a question, if they're relevant. I was going to say Matt. No, yeah, I thought he was coming, so what's he got to do with it? No, he was, sorry. Thank you.
Carly Gregory, Manager of Marketing and Promotions.
Thank you, Miss Gregory. I've just got one question for you. I just wanted to know, with all of these, the, the events that are listed here, do we, do we get any report as a councillor or, you know, or council of how non-council events, like, you know, like a report on it?
Like a wrap-up report or something?
Yeah, just say like the Wild Foods and Cultural Festival. Do we get a breakdown of that?
Well, we don't get a, a report. Obviously, part of the funding mechanism is that they have to acquit those funds.
Okay.
So there's an acquittal process where, as a team, we ensure, whether it's the community funding team or my event sponsorship team, to make sure that what has been promised is delivered. And obviously, a big part of that is obviously usually wrapped up in festivals. So as part of a festival wrap-up, yes, we would report on attendees and those kind of things. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. And then if we go forward, we just, so if it comes before us next time?
Yes, probably the other place that you would see the data from this is pretty clear in the quarterly reporting that we do as an organisation. So in that quarterly report, we, we absolutely every quarter report on economic benefit, visitations from outside the city at these events, things that are supported and produced. So, yes.
All right, thank you. That's my, anyone else? Mayor, no? Oh, Carly, I think the mayor's got a question.
Thank you. Through the chair, just looking at recommendation B, I guess we're looking at impact study support. So I guess we'll get a fe, feedback on, because that was quite a new one, the Wild Foods and Cultural Festival. So we're really keen to see how that report comes back.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think another thing to note on that event is that there's quite a lot of interest from Tourism and Events Queensland, who not only attended the event, but we're really happy to see it back in Ipswich and see how we can work, I suppose, in a tripartisan way to grow and retain that event in Ipswich in the festival as well.
Thank you, Miss Gregory. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so I'll move to, do I have a mover for that? Thanks councillor Doyle. Second? Thanks Deputy Mayor Johnny. Any discussion on it? I'll put it to the vote, everyone in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Thank you. So we'll move on to item four, which is the 2025 Spartan Trifecta Weekend Event Sponsorship. Could I have the relevant officer up for that one?
Carly Gregory, Manager of Marketing and Promotions.
Ms Gregory, my question is, can you just give me a background of this event?
Yes.
Because I, I don't think it alluded to, but I think it's an event that's coming back. Was it at, yeah?
Yeah, I think just for some general context, I think we would all remember, pre-COVID, there was a number of endurance events of different brands and from different promoters that existed and were incredibly popular at the time. COVID had a really significant impact on endurance events. So it's great to see that these events are kind of back. So while this was planned, I think, pre-COVID, it obviously went to the Gold Coast and then has come back. We've been in conversations about bringing it back to Ipswich, which obviously, that's what it's planning at the moment. This is actually an international event. The group that run the event that's coming to Ipswich run, I would say, the Pacific Ring of these events, which is Fiji, Melbourne, you know, Ipswich, those kind of things. So it'd be great to see this back. As we would know, endurance events attract a pretty broad audience. There's everything from the kids' races, you know, which are everything from sort of 800 metres to a few Ks, through to what they call the ultra, which sounds horrendous, 50 kilometres and, you know, 60 obstacles, those kind of things. So it has a pretty broad appeal and previously attracts nearly 6,000 attendees, these kind of events.
All right, because I just went on their website and it's like, we're going to be returning. And I heard someone say that the event had been held there before.
Yeah, in a much smaller scale.
Much smaller, right, okay, okay. So.
But it hasn't, like, it's been, it hasn't been in Ipswich every year as I know.
No, no, so we can't, we're bringing it back. Okay. No, that's all my questions on it. Anyone else? Mayor?
Ms Gregory, do we know how many people have used hotels here in Ipswich for that weekend or is it camping or what's the, what's the normal?
Obviously Ivory's Rock has accommodation on site. So I think definitely when I read through the assessment, one of the really big attractors for us is to activate a site that has many bed nights. It's multi-night. It would mean we'd have accommodation houses. Yes. It, it depends, this is a multi-day event where obviously the trifectas that people register in a number of the, you know, competitions. So it would be over two days. So they'd need to have, you know, probably a night prior and overnight during it. So two to three nights, which is important. But you can go on individual event and just be a day tripper as well.
So would Ivory's Rock be offering accommodation for a couple of days beforehand and after? It's okay?
Correct.
So how do we attract them to come into, to other parts of Ipswich?
I suppose, given the, a number of attendees with 5,800 participants attracted, you know, Ivory's Rocks can't accommodate all of those people. I would just, you know, because it's obviously, you know, an event hub as well as an accommodation house. So absolutely, we'd be working with the operators in the lead-up to this.
Okay, well, good. Thank you, Ms Gregory. Thank you, Chair.
Right, thank you. And councillor Antonelli?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the amount. And I do have a question in relation to, now I'm, the question's just gone from my mind. But it was more about the, I'm just going to sound vague now.
Was it the?
Oh, yes, the question was. So we previously had it. What year did we have it? Pre-COVID?
It was pre-COVID. I, I thought it was before my time, 2017, 2018. It was a number of years ago before I was a councillor.
All right, so you're not aware of how much money council provided on that occasion?
I think it would have been less because it wasn't a multi-day event, is what I recall.
Right, okay. Yeah, that was the comparison I was looking for.
It was also a different assessment criteria at the time it last came.
Yeah.
I suppose, so it's hard to compare.
Yeah, no worries.
I can take that on notice, I'll come back to you.
No, that's all right. If it was a, if it was a different event, then it's not a real comparison. But I was hoping to get some comparison money-wise from now to then. So, yeah, no worries.
The events that would have been compared? The events that would have been comparative didn't go ahead or no longer exist, I suppose, in market.
And obviously, there'll be a report coming back as to how many competitors?
They'll have to do an acquittal? Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So we'll have all the data.
Okay, thank you, Miss Gregory. Okay, I move that, that report be received. Do I have? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And councillor Doyle has a second, discussion? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Let's all participate.
No, I was gonna go, like, let's get up, let's go for a walk, let's.
Well, no, it's, it's much.
You can start the 50K, I'll follow.
You will you?
Miss Gregory lost me at 50Ks. Um, but I think naturally, when you, participants come to events like this, they're trying to find a really close location because of race start times and prepping and stuff like that. So I think naturally that people will want to stay as close as possible, which is means in our beautiful city. So it's, but it's really exciting, especially because of that active and healthy part of what we're trying to push in our, um, our strategies and et cetera. And I just want the, um, maybe we can get the CrossFit finals next? How about that, Carly? No?
Thank you.
Councillor Mattson?
Yeah, I had a look at their website, because before this agenda came out, I didn't know what a Spartan Trifecta Weekend was. And I'm very interested to see that they've successfully run this at the Woodford Folk Festival site up in the Moreton Bay Council Regional Area. And as a previous volunteer up there, one of the first things that just struck me when I had a tour of Ivory's Rock is just, wow, this place has a lot of untapped potential for Ipswich. And so it's wonderful to see these sorts of facility, um, events being run out of there and contributing to Ipswich as a whole. Really, these two, that, in particular what we have at Ivory's Rock, it's just facilities like that don't really exist. The infrastructure that they have on site to accommodate camping and events is outstanding.
Yeah, I must echo your words, councillor. I recently went out for a visit and was absolutely blown away on what they have out there, the amount of accommodation. And when you think you've, you've seen it all, they've got even more, and then you go around the cor- and they've got even more. So, yeah, the, the accommodation out there is, yeah, great. And they were holding a summit out there, a religious summit just recently. And on previous years, they would buy the tents. And then you'd, you'd buy it off them. But what they do now is, and it's such a great setup. They go, they rent all the tents, they fit out the tent. So all you have to do is come in and your bed's already ma- made in a tent. And then you can get your own toilet allocated to you. So they're just little pods. So in COVID, people were out there and it was just a single, single shower toilet, and you and your family's just got that. And you get, you know, instead of it on a regular campsite, you know, you've got every, every man and his dog using the toilets, but, and the showers, but this is just a single pod. So it's actually quite a good, good setup out there. So if you've ever got the chance to go out and visit them, they do tours to show you out there, so.
Are we splattering?
Yeah, let's go. Like, sign up. Have you seen those? How big that, yeah. No, but I, I am very much supportive of this event. And yes, I too had a look at their website, Jacob, and was very impressed by the, the, yeah. So I don't know how long we'd have to train for Deputy Mayor to be able to get up on those fields, but if you're willing, so am I. So I'm very supportive of, of this event. If that's, anyone else with any discussion? No? So I'll put it to the vote, all those in favour? That's unanimously carried. Well done. I'll move on to item five on the agenda, which is Ipswich Hotel Investment Prospectus. Could I have the relevant officer up on that one?
Chair, if I may, can we just, so we know as to who's best placed to answer questions relating to the prospectus content design or the actual incentives that have been proposed as part of the?
Yeah, I was gonna ask both. I was gonna say, just give a bit of, my question was going to be a bit of a rap and then, and then just talk through the incentives.
Excellent, thank you.
If you can just na- say your name and your title?
Yeah, Gemma Rippon, Economic Policy and Strategy Lead, Economic Development Section.
Great. If we could just have a, just a, um, just a bit of a overview of, um, the, the hotel prospectus?
Yes, so last year, we had the motion for a action plan for hotel and short-term accommodation. One of the items, one of the action items out of that was to introduce an investment prospectus. The intention was to be able to get some data in regards to the performance of hotels in Ipswich so that we can market that to the industry, which we understand to be quite integral to their decision-making.
Great. Does anyone have any questions about the actual document? No? Thank you very much. Oh, did you? Okay, if, um, Mr Poll can?
If Mr Poll could come up to the lectern? I won't say stage this time, Mr Poll?
Chair, through you, does this relate to the incentive?
Yes.
What I might do is defer to our planning colleagues?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Who have been the ones that have actually designed the package?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Mr Davy. Mr Davy, I see there's some really good incentives for enticing a potential developer or to develop hotels, which I'm very in favour of. Just want to talk a bit about the different incentives. We've, we've created some new ones so we can entice people in. Can you talk about particularly the parking, how that works? What does that mean?
Of course. So I might run through each one.
Yeah, go on, yeah, that would be great.
So in developing the prospectus, we put our thinking cap side and come up with a couple of options. We also considered other incentives that are currently offered by ourselves and other local governments and the methodology for doing that. Of course, we can progress a combination of these, or there may be others, or there may be some that aren't, that aren't appetising. So the first one is a 50% reduction in infrastructure charges. So that would mean that they don't pay the regular level of infrastructure charges. So financially, that would be an incentive for them. And consider the balance being paid as a payment plan. So that means that at the moment, if you were to pay or required to be, pay charges, you'd have to pay those charges before you commenced. So potentially having a payment plan as well as a reduction makes it an incentive. The next one is the parking standard. So for a hotel, we do require parking be provided. And there are certain rates, and some of the rates are quite high depending upon the operating model of the hotel. This is an interesting one because in most cases, it's in the best interests of the hotel operator to have a parking solution that works for patrons. So there would be some, I suppose, boldness in this suggestion that we let the, the operators or the designers set the standard for parking as opposed to being concerned about it ourselves. The downside of that is if there is a facility that's not provided with adequate car parking, then it's reliant upon external parking. And now, noting most of the incentive here is relying upon the right location for the hotel. So that would be close to public transport and other facilities. The next one is a compressed development application timeframe. So we'd envisage that we'd start discussions with an operator well before they lodge and almost work through some of the things that they need to address in their application to get their application to be the best it can be and give it the best material to, to get through the application process as quickly as possible. Then we would look at any of these incentives being subject to some form of agreement, preferably an infrastructure agreement. So when you look down through some of the criteria, things like a timeframe and ensuring we keep some regulation of the speed of which the development can progress, making sure we manage the pool of incentives we're giving, because we can't just give a blank cheque, and ensure that the development is to an appropriate standard to warrant the application of an incentive.
Great, awesome. Um, Mayor Harding, got a question?
Yes, I'm just clarifying this recommendation, because obviously there's, I guess, the parking and the, um, the wavering of the fees, you know, I guess, is what's being decided here. Recommendation C is that planning, PRS, proceed to draft the policy for council consideration. So we're not making a final decision today, it's just some, some guidance from council to say, hey, can we look at fleshing this out? Is that what we're asking for today?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so the prospectus itself, by and large, is drafted and ready to go. We would expect that following this, if the recommendations are accepted, that we go away and prepare some kind of incentive policy with some supporting material to make sure that it can be appropriately governed and, and then release. So that we've got, you know, the, the incentive package sitting there rather than releasing the prospectus without having that, that background material and the governance arrangements around that.
Okay. Noting that in other LGAs, there's a combination of either wavering fees or a payment plan. What were some of the considerations that, that the organisation had in proposing the, the 50% waiver?
Uh, look, we haven't seen great evidence of hotel development happening across a city. And so principally, we were looking at the evidence in the report, but the opportunity that comes with the Olympics. So we feel that there is good opportunity to offer something different. Now, looking around other councils, there are a range of solutions, but not many offer a, a complete reduction or even a partial reduction. So we thought as a point of difference, having a partial reduction was valid. And then leaning on some of the surrounding councils having a payment plan over time. But I actually think the, potentially the biggest impact will be on the parking front. Now, as I said earlier, there is a potential double-edged sword there in that the operators may be quite happy to do a purpose-built. And in my experience, most operators want a parking solution. The downside is if there's not a parking solution delivered on-site, they will then need to rely on other sources. Now, there is a, a silver lining in that, in that this may create another market in the city for paid car parking arrangements. Because at times, if you are familiar with some accommodation options in Brisbane, you may stay at the hotel, pay a separate charge for a car park, and they actually have a concierge service to drop your car at the car park. So that sort of model may be an operational chance here. And really, what we're after is just to try and offer that point of difference. We know that the construction market is challenging, so offering anything to, to sweeten that opportunity would be great.
And Mr Davy, if we were really clear, I think when we talk about waiving an infrastructure charge, it's not just like it's, it, it's funny money. It is, in fact, it's still the actual cost for the infrastructure?
Yes.
And so there will be a cost to council, to the rate payers?
Yeah, absolutely. So just for context, we do have discounts and infrastructure charge waivers in place at the moment. And we'll need to look at a new suite of those with the implementation of the draft planning scheme and local government infrastructure plan. When we looked and we've done some analysis over the last 10 years, we've offered about $6 million worth of incentives and discounts over the last 10 years. About half of those have been realised. So that means half of those projects either didn't proceed or proceeded in a different environment, which didn't afford the discount. So in the past, we haven't had a great, you know, modelling exercise, I suppose, to support the likely outcome of these types of incentives, hence the extra consideration and criteria in here to look at putting some fences around it to go, well, we'll fix what the amount of money is and we'll fix what it's intended for. The, the total volume of a million dollars sounds like a lot of money, and, you know, it is. But over the life of the city, it's not. When we're, you know, over the life of the city, or at least the life of the next LGP, we're looking at collecting, you know, $1.5 billion worth of infrastructure for assets. You know, that, that's a small component if it gets development occurring.
So just so it's, we're very transparent, just to say there was development that came forward and there was, you know, half a million dollars' worth of infrastructure charges. They would be charged $250,000 and council would take on the other 250 for the
That's correct.
the roadworks or the water sewerage connections and things like that.
Yes, yeah. So that means that, you know, for, for a, for a project in the, the city, there, there would be road projects and, you know, other projects across the entire city that might have small contributions of the money that they would pay towards, for example, Red Bank Plains Road or Old Toowoomba Road. And so what that means is we, we've had, we'll have a shortfall. And so we'll have to make up that shortfall when it comes to construction. But that might be in 20 years' time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Davy. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah, well, Brett's there, if I may. I was just going to ask, I mean, I am, I am reminded of the fact that the old Butterfield International Hotel, they were afforded a number of, um, opportunities there and relaxations and the like. So this is no easy field or no easy mine to plough. So I'll, one of the things that I'm just as concerned about is with respect to apartment-style housing as well. And I'm just wondering, if we're gonna go down this path with respect to hotels, we probably should be looking at some similar relaxations in relation to developing hotels, sorry, developing apartment-style accommodation as well. Because that is something that we are short of here and we have a, a need for, particularly within the CBD precinct. So is there some of these relaxations that could be afforded also for those types of developments?
Of course. So this is probably the first major conversation about a potential incentive to apply under the new scheme. But there are a range of options that we've been working on with knowledge of the sort of impact of our incentives of the past. And that's why we did that 10-year analysis that I've referred to. But we'll be coming back to the council or the, the hypercommittee and council in the future with a, a more significant package of incentives that we can offer. Noting that, you know, those very things you've suggested, we need to try and prioritise attached housing developments throughout the city. Yes, so we will be looking at that.
I noticed that Brisbane City Council is doing some community consultation in relation to that. I think at the moment, it's not recently opened, actually, or just recently opened for community consultations. So are we looking at that, what they're doing in that regard as well?
Yeah, we'll have a look at what other councils are doing. But we've, as part of the draft planning scheme, through the instrument itself, we've tried to make it more accommodating for units in the right location or the right type of housing in the right location. So the next question is, wha- what's the viability line for someone to come and build a residential tower? And are, and are we able to influence that through a discount of application fees or infrastructure charges to get it over the line? And personally, I don't think we will be able to influence it enough with the levers that we have access to. But we can certainly look at it and make it a bit more attractive.
I could add, Chair, that when this came forward to council last year, we had quite a big discussion about how to versus residential. And we thought that this would be a, it's a good step to start off with and, and see how things go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Davy.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll, I'll move this report. Do I have a second, uh? Thanks, councillor Doyle. Open for discussion. Mayor Harding?
Thank you, Chair. Look, I moved a motion for council to prepare a hotel strategy to address the significant undersupply of short-term accommodation to meet the rapid growth demands of our city. And the Hotel and Short-Term Accommodation Action Plan was developed in November last year. And this Hotel Investment Prospectus is a key action item for that action plan. I'm very interested in the planning levers and the incentives that have been put forward to actively drive investment into short-term accommodation here in Ipswich. We now know that around 80% of our demand for rooms is driven by corporate travel, including raft base amberly, local industry and government travel. Large-scale events also exhaust our available beds 26 weekends of the year. And I think the incentives proposed in this prospectus, including a 50% reduction in infrastructure charges, compressed development application timelines, will be very attractive. compressed development application timelines will be very attractive, I think. And waiving charges up to one million dollars for delivery up to two hundred units. Agreement with council for the achievement of the incentive and a complete waiver of minimum parking standards is something that's very new for us. So I think hopefully that will attract the much-needed investment in this accommodation. We're one of the very few councils that will be offering this. So by eliminating the need for a standard parking allocation, we'll allow investors to tailor their development to the needs of their hotel and potentially utilise existing parking facilities. We've had a lot of queries over the past few years on why the venue building was not utilised for residential or hotel accommodation. And this comes back to what investors have told us over and over again. It's been the lack of parking and ability to build additional parking on the site that has prohibited investors from being interested in moving forward with plans for residential or short-term accommodation in that venue building. Future growth in our visitor market is expected to generate an excess of two hundred and ten thousand room nights signed by twenty thirty-three, which require an additional three hundred and ten rooms. Ideally, we'd like to be able to attract one or two branded large hotels, two or three boutique high-quality hotels and two to three serviced apartments. This was City Council Hotel Investment Prospectus aligns with the consultation with the community and stakeholders when we developed our twenty thirty-two Legacy Games roadmap. There'll be a requirement for eighty-one thousand rooms to support the delivery of the games in twenty thirty-two. If you want to attract teams here to train in the lead-up and even afterwards, we need to actively prioritise hotel investment. And this prospectus, in conjunction with the Hotel and Short-Term Accommodation Action Plan, does that. Can I thank the team who've done a lot of evidence-based work, worked, looked around Australia, I think globally as well. But thank you for very much the facts and the figures. It really helps us in making decisions when we have those, those facts and figures rather than just going on gut instinct. It's always nice to have that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Doyle?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I too just want to thank the team for the extensive research and work they've put into this report and the prospectus. It's been a journey. Just over four years ago, when we took on the CBD redevelopment, we know we absolutely need residential accommodation and hotel accommodation within the CBD. And it's certainly mentioned in a lot of our external reports on how we go about improving the fortunes of the CBD. And incentivising always comes up. So this is a great start. Let's see how we go in, in trying to finally get one of those hotels across the line. We know we've had a couple of, a couple of interested operators, but this might just be enough to get a deal across the line. So looking forward to it. And thank you again to the staff.
Just quickly, through your chair, I'm supportive of the creation of this policy, obviously. And I again thank the staff, thank the planning team for really putting some skin in the game there. And, you know, if, when this policy gets formed, I guess, the commitment to expediting the timeframes, concierging, the, the planning processes, et cetera, I think that makes a really big difference to investors. And noting that there's a one million dollar cap on the combined waiver of fees for any applications as well that gives you that ceiling. So it's not like we're over committing. So love, love all the thought that's gone into it. And I'm really looking forward to seeing the, working through the policy and seeing it come to fruition. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Madden?
Thanks, Chair. I'd just like to congratulate the council officers on their report. But looking at other LGAs that I've had involvement with, one of the incentives that's offered in certainly in rural areas to encourage investment is either a total refund or a partial refund of the council fees, provided the, the project commenced construction within a certain period of time. We just had a recent, or we just had an item on a previous committee with regard to land banking with supermarkets. This happens with motel companies as well and petroleum companies. It's, it's not just with supermarkets. And I'd encourage the council officers in the preparation of their final report to look at other LGAs that have offered either reductions or complete refunds of council fees, provided the project commences and completes construction within a certain period of time. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I would just like to thank all the officers that pulled this together, but in particular, thank you to Mayor Harding and also former councillor Fettner for starting the process in July two thousand and twenty-three. We look at the legacy of the Olympic and the Paralympics two thousand and thirty-two. But I think, as the mayor alluded to, there's also a pre-Olympic readiness we need to have. And there will be teams, there will be athletes travelling way before the Olympics. And for us to be ready to have the accommodation, have something for them to be able to come to. At the moment, we don't. We don't classify. We don't have anything that we can offer any team. The Nigerian team came, women's football team looked at us last year and we didn't comply because we didn't have a hotel. But having something like this ready in waiting for the Olympic Games would just add to, yeah, I think it'll be not just, not just getting the teams here. It's also for the Olympics, but it's also other things like national titles of, of other sports, state titles of other sports. When those players come into the area, you know, at the moment, we're, we're utilizing the schools to have them in their dorms. But having a motel is, would be greatly beneficial as well. So I'm very supportive of this. And going forward and look forward to seeing what becomes of it all. So, yeah, thank you. So I'll move that, that, that this be adopted. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. So now we'll move on to item six, the report of the Advocacy Advisory Committee, number, number one, was on the fifth of September two thousand and four. Do we have any, any questions? No. Do I have a mover? Thanks, Mayor Harding. Seconda councillor Doyle. Any discussion?
Thank you, Chair. As the Chair of the Advocacy Advisory Committee, we had our first meeting. It was a great opportunity to just come up to speed with the advocacy approaches in the past and also the We Can't Wait campaign. And I guess the, the, the report here shows, you know, advice and so on. So you'll see that the, I guess, most of it's all, I guess, a few action items there to what we'll be doing after the state election campaign. And also a few things such as, I know this is your suggestion, councillor Madden, in particular, writing to the Minister for Transport and Main Roads, and it's like the shadow, in regards to increasing the number of express train services between Ipswich and Brisbane as well. So there's quite a few things that probably are not billions of dollars or hundreds of millions of dollars to do, but things like that that would make a big impact to our community. So I think it was a good first meeting and look forward to the next few. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else, I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Thank you. All right. So now we're going to move to item, item seven to ten. These, these are late items and they're all confidential.
Seven to thirteen, I think. Oh, we've had three new items come through this morning, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Seven to thirteen. It printed me, but I've got, yeah. Yep, I just don't have them. Yeah, seven to thirteen. But before we start, I'll just ask CEO the nature of these reports and why they've come in late.
Thank you, Chair. So as you noted there, there was, item seven to ten were late reports with your indulgence in letting us consider putting forward late reports. So they were issued around lunchtime yesterday and hopefully you've got printed copies of those in your packs or online, depending on your preference. There were three extra late reports that we have put forward, but they've only come very, very late. So at around eleven o'clock today. Wade Wilson, the manager of executive services, does have hard copies. And what we're just proposing is we wanted to bring them forward, given that they're ready. We offer to you that the relevant officers of the team can provide briefings on all of the matters, all of the late matters, obviously, including the report on the Nicola Street Precinct Project Control Group and then the, the six leasing reports. And then just really put it to you as a committee as to what you're comfortable with dealing with today. If there are leasing reports that you need more time to consider, we would recommend and proceed to convene a special Economic and Cultural Development Committee. And I've discussed that with the Chair of the council, Mayor Harding, in terms of that, the opportunity for that committee would be actually within the timing of the ordinary council meeting next Thursday, just given that the LGAQ conference is on next week and how busy your diaries are. So really at your disposal as a committee, how you'd like to proceed today. We've got officers here that can obviously speak to all of the matters. But there'll be some you might want to decide on to recommend today. Or some you might want to defer to the special committee next week.
Okay, thanks, CEO. Without divulging much, so the four that was previous, that we got yesterday, hopefully you've got your head around those. The ones that have come in this morning, yeah, this afternoon, this morning, one of them has been previously put up, so it's just a bit of a shuffle. So you would be aware of that one. So, but there's two that are new. So we'd have to see how, I, I'm comfortable in all of them, only because I've been briefed on it. So, but it's up to what you feel comfortable in going forward.
Chair, I feel comfortable in considering them, but I know some of my colleagues may not. And, and that's okay. It's a lot of information that's come to us last minute. But in saying that, these are really important matters and we have times. But again, I'm across the papers and I know my way around them.
So potentially, can we go into closed session, discuss and then see which ones we want to proceed with? And then which ones we need more time to get our heads around?
Yeah, and I just, I haven't been briefed on any of them. So I have obviously read through the other three that are new today. So I think when we go into closed session, if we go to closed session for, for all of them, if that's, if I could ask that of your indulgence, Chair. So we can actually get through them all.
We'll certainly know at that time whether or not we've got enough information or time.
And if we need to defer any of them till next Thursday.
Yeah, I was just going to ask the question through the Chair, if I may. Is there any particular time pressures on any of these matters? And you did raise, CEO, that it's likely that we'd have to have the meeting prior to the council meeting. No?
Actually recommending, depending on how you decide to proceed, that the ordinary council meeting commence at its usual time at nine o'clock as advertised. And the business of the ordinary council continue until your morning tea break, usually around ten o'clock. And then before that, though, that the Chair would consider adjourning council and convening a special Economic and Cultural Development Committee meeting at ten thirty. Then here, whatever business remains on the, or is on the agenda for the special, conclude that. And then the Chair would have indicated that the ordinary council will resume ten minutes following the special committee. And then the council meeting can conclude its business, including considering any recommendations arising from the special committee. Just noting that a number of, the mayor and councillors are at the LGAQ conference Monday to Wednesday, a number, so it would be difficult to do so. We could consider an eight AM committee meeting, but just depending on how many matters there are, it would be risky time-wise.
And I understand too, that if we do, if we were to have the special meeting on the day of the council meeting in, during an adjournment, some of the councillors might feel that they don't have sufficient information. Those who aren't on the Economic Development Committee might feel they don't have sufficient information leading from that previous meeting either. So.
True. They could certainly attend as observers and perceive the information.
I'm just trying to work it out in my mind what the best process would be, either way.
And they would have this information today, like the rest of us as well. So they'd have that, that week and a bit.
But they're not all present here, of course, nor would they be potentially present at that meeting either, because they're not committee members. So.
In terms of time sensitivity, obviously, it's always a balance of ensuring you've got enough time to make wise and good decisions. But we are very eager to continue to push very hard on the leasing of the precinct for all of the reasons that I'm sure the committee understands.
But is there anything that's under any particular time pressure for the next week out of these seven items? I believe it's seven items.
All of them. Timing's of the essence.
Oh, time's always of the essence.
No, 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 with regard to opening of the cinema and the timing is just so critical that we get this right.
I guess, though, if you, if the committee's, sorry, Chair, do you mind if I just?
Yeah, you go, Sonia.
I guess decisions can't be made either way until the council meeting next Thursday. So I guess it's really a matter of how you get to that point. Does that make sense? So I guess if you're suggesting that we defer to the next month of committee, then I would say, no, no, please, if we can find a way to consider them in this round, the October round. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. What I would recommend is we go into closed session and then we can talk about them all freely. And if you're still not happy with, especially two of them, then we can defer the two that are new. There's, Deputy Mayor, you weren't in the room, but the three that's come new, one of them is an older one. So there's only two really of the three that you didn't have papers today. So what, what I'm recommending is we go into closed session, we can talk about them all. And then if we're not comfortable in going forward today with the potentially two new ones, then we'll go to a special meeting, potentially, when the, in the middle of the ordinary next week. Okay? Are we ready for a break or we go, we plough through?
May we do ten minutes and then bunker down?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so I move that we go in for a ten-minute break. Do I have a seconda? Yeah, all in favour? Sorry, that was councillor Doyle and the mayor. Yep, all in favour. Let's go for a ten-minute break and we'll come back at ten, two forty.
And then we'll go in. And then we'll go in. And then we'll go in.
All right, thank you and welcome back to the to the Economic and Cultural Development Committee. We're looking at Item seven to thirteen. As all of these have got confidential attachments or information, I move that we go into a closed session. Do I have a second or on that? Councilor Doyle. So that in accordance with Section two five four three C, G and I of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve, the meeting move into closed session to discuss items seven through to thirteen. And that being the Nicholas Street Precinct PCG Control Group, the lease of two B, two B O two, T one, well there's two options for T one, and T two, K two, and the Nicholas, the Torma Walk. So I put that to the vote, all in favor. That's unanimous.
Harrison, just give me the nod. Okay. Oh, thank you very much. We've now returned back into open session. We just had a number of items, seven to thirteen, that had confidential attachments or information. So we'll move to item seven, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct PCG report. So I move that report to be adopted. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. Do you have a discussion on that? No, all those in favour, that's unanimously carried. Move on to item eight, which is the approval of a lease at two B zero two of Torma Play, Torma Walk, eight Nicholas Street. I move that report. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Antonelli. Discussion? No, move, uh, put that to the vote. Sorry, everyone in favour, thank you. That's unanimously carried. Item nine, which is approval of an agreement for lease for tenancy T one venue, thirty seven Nicholas Street, option one. I move that. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. Johnny, just open for discussion, anyone? No, put that to the vote, all in favour. That's unanimously carried. Thank you. Item ten is the lease agreements for T one, and that's option two. I move that. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you councillor Madden. Discussion? No, put that to the vote, all those in favour. That's unanimously carried. We move on to item eleven, which is the lease agreement for tenancy two of thirty seven Nicholas Street. I move that. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you councillor Antonelli. Open for discussion? No discussion, put it to the vote, all those in favour. That's unanimously carried. It's getting a long day, long day. Item twelve, and this is the lease for K two. I move that one. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you councillor Madden. Open for discussion? No, thank you. Um, I vote, let's put it to the vote unanimously carried. Thank you. Um, then we've got item thirteen, which is the tenancy for two BK two, Torma Walk. I move that one. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you councillor Madden. And open for discussion? No, put it to the vote, all those in favour. That's unanimously carried. Thank you. So we don't have any notices of motion. Matters arising. I wanted to, um, I wanted to open up a discussion for the deputy chair of this committee. I would like to move that councillor Doyle be appointed as the deputy chair. Do I have a second at the council? Um, Mayor Harding?
As per the email that went around to us all?
Yeah, the email that went around. Any discussion on it? Yeah, for me, I'll, I'll say councillor Doyle, since I've been elected, she's been invaluable to me as a chair in this role. She has, comes with extreme experience of being the NSP chair previously in the previous council. Um, uh, I would welcome her input, her expertise, and I can't see, um, for me, anyone with better experience. So, um, yeah, I'll open up to anyone else. Um.
Thank you Chair for the kind words and look forward to working with you should I receive the support of my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour. That's unanimously carried. Thank you very much. Um, so finally, we come to the end of the, the meeting. Um, so we'll, the meeting ends at three fifty. Um, I move that we take a ten minute break and come back at four o'clock on the dot for the Economic and Sustainability Committee. All those in favour? Carried, great. Thank you all girls, thank you all boys.